All right. Good evening, everyone. Oh, I have some friends. Cheers. I'd like to welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Tiger Twolton School Board, and I will call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Chair, there are. There are actually three. As the executive session was not held this evening, Items One, Items Two, and Items Eight A will are deleted from this evening's agenda.
Perfect, thank you. So, hearing that, I would entertain to approve the amended agenda.
I motion that we move to approve the agenda as amended.
I second. The motion is made by Vice Chair Heimace and seconded by Director Zerschmid. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing them, we'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And with that, we will move into the Superintendent and Board Communication, Dr. Ricky Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Three items this evening to bring to your attention. First, we were informed that Tiger Twolton School District has been identified as eligible for funding through the 21st Century Title IV Federal Grant to the amount of $323,747 that will go towards programming over the next five years. Grantees will receive 100% of the award in years one, two, and three of the grant. Then, funding will be reduced to 90% of the original level in year four and 80% in year five. Grantees are expected to provide full programming in years four and five as they work towards fully sustaining programs that this grant will help us stand up. All granting awards are contingent upon annual allocations from the United States Department of Education, and I'm going to pause here for just a moment. These grants are notoriously challenging to achieve. They are focused to our media schools, our Title I elementaries, and I wish to give kudos to Director Rose, who has successfully navigated those before in her previous roles with the Boys and Girls Club, to a retired employee, Susan Salkild, who helped us write the grant, to Director Xenia Un, who also helped us think in terms of the equity component and inclusion components of those grants. But we were very, very excited to receive those and receive this, and we have the opportunity to apply again for larger amounts in the next five-year cycle. Pending some minor revisions and resubmissions, we expect to receive close to $1.5 million over the life cycle of the grant. The partnership with REEP, and again, Susan Salkild, Director Tracy Rose, Lisa Burton, and Dr. Xenia Un allowed for this opportunity to come to fruition. So, we're very excited about that opportunity. Second, I would bring to your attention again that on Wednesday, this Wednesday, we will have the all staff welcome back. It will be this year at Twolton High School. Please, Directors, if you would arrive, if you are able to attend at 8:30 to form the Welcome Tunnel like we did last year. The celebration will be from 9:00 to 10:30. There is also a health walk at 7:00 AM, and I will be there, ready to go, so happy to walk with anybody who would love to join us. And then, following that, staff will continue to have a health benefits fair, and our union partners will have an opportunity to meet with members. And then, last but not least, today marks an important day in the history of Tiger Twolton. I wish to say kudos to Principal Brewer and the Durham Elementary staff for hosting the first-ever in the district dodgeball competition between an elementary school and Central Office. I am pleased to announce that Central Office brought home the trophy. This is the five Ds of dodgeball, which would be dodge, duck, dip, dive, and dodge, for those of you who are dodgeball movie fanatics. Deterred, Principal Brewer has already challenged Central Office to a rematch rumored to involve bowling. So, again, kudos to Principal Brewer and the Durham Elementary staff. It was great fun, and they were worthy opponents. That's my report.
Thank you, and I know that school has not started yet, but some of you gave introductions last time, some of you weren't here and weren't able to do that, but if you have anything that you'd like to say in terms of getting ready for school, or briefly introduced yourselves, name, school, pronouns, then this would be a great time. So, who wants to start?
Hi, I'm Atticus. I use he/him pronouns, and I am from Creekside High School. I'm also very excited to be here, thank you.
All right, perfect. Is it? Okay, it's just really quiet. My name is Owen Albrecht. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm from Tiger High. And one of the things that I have been doing over the summer is working with Tiger High Leadership and other student affinity groups on how can we restructure kind of the student leadership layout to a way where it kind of works and it's more productive, and so that's something that I've been working with with the new principal, Mrs. Barron, and kind of the admin team. She's taking on the challenge of being a principal and a leadership teacher, and we're really excited to work with her of just making a lot of really positive changes at Tiger High, and I look forward to, you know, it's just the start, it's just the summer, so seeing how this year goes.
Awesome. Thank you all for those, and then I will move to board updates. Anyone want to share? Vice Chair Heimace?
I don't have much to say other than I want to welcome all the staff that are back now and getting ready for the new school year. I know that it's always a very exciting time of year, and also one that can be a little hectic at times, and so, and I apologize for not being able to be present at the 30th celebration or welcoming back, but, you know, I have to do that, my other job too, so I do appreciate all of the effort that everybody is doing and that they're putting forward to making sure that students, like our student reps here, are able to just show up on day one and feel the love and feel welcome, so thank you.
Anyone else for updates?
So, the only thing I wanted to add was, last week, I was at the new teacher orientation. A surprisingly large batch of new teachers and staff there. It was a really good kickoff. I spent quite a number of hours that morning, and I was really pleased to see the level of professionalism as we welcomed them in and taught them how to become a TTSD employee. Really looking forward to Wednesday's event. I did want to just say that paving will be happening on Boons Ferry Road starting tomorrow and the next day, and so getting in and out of the school will be challenging, and so anybody who's coming, if you can get there by 8:30, you'll probably be there before the pavers, but after that, you'll be there after the pavers. So, be prompt.
I just want to say a quick appreciation to our student reps. Not every board in the state, I work with a lot of boards in the state, not every board, in fact, a minority of boards in the state have student reps, and really appreciate the fact that you all are here, you're engaged, and you provide feedback to the board, it's really important. So, as you went around, introduced yourselves, and you were here last time, just want to show appreciation for that, thank you for your involvement and your input.
And just piggybacking on that, just to have so many, it's really exciting, and I love, you know, we kind of joked about, like, well, Bleacher is eventually back over there, and so, like, everybody gets to be a rep, and I think there's something, though, really powerful about that in all of you and others as well, really wanting to be a part of this process, and sort of, I think Owen can kind of bear witness to kind of that process of what it's like at the beginning and then realizing I can really have a part in these discussions, and I can ask those questions, and I can kind of affect change in different ways, and there can be folks that aren't necessarily a student rep that might come to you and, you know, have ideas, and we can kind of work with them on that process as well, just like with the Climate Change Committee and some things like that, so it is really exciting. Not a lot from me, excited about Wednesday. Several of us were at the Town Hall, I think that was last week, with Wyden and Dr. Stacey, asked a great question, kind of piggybacking on our event around mental health and partnerships, and so I think it's good just to get more of that on the radar in terms of partnerships we can have with community colleges, other institutions, to kind of these grow-your-own programs around mental health professionals to continue to kind of support for us, our students, but sort of the population at large, so that's all I have. Hattie, I'm just confirming that we have no public comment for tonight? All right, and so with that, I will move to our first Item A for Reports and Discussion, the Superintendent Report on Goals and Equity and the Audit Summary.
Chair Irvin, members of the board, and community at large, it is a pleasure this evening to bring to you our Policy ACC Annual Equity Audit Summary. Next slide, please. What I wish to share with you all is that, as we shared with you last year, a fairly lengthy report in consideration, because there are very specific data sets that are called out, we will give you a brief overview of that data set. You also received in your board packets an extensive 50-plus-page report digging more deeply into that data. That said, rather than, it requires, I think, an opportunity for us to dig further into the data than perhaps a regular business meeting, board business meeting gives us breadth to do. And so, tonight's presentation is focused on the accountability data. However, it is our recommendation that a board work session be scheduled to allow for a further in-depth conversation and work through the data, and discussion more of what the data tells us and its implications in terms of the work that we are doing, the work that is called out relative to the strategic plan, and including our members now of the EEAC as well. And so, it is also a recommendation that a complete equity analysis, so rather than a thorough analysis year after year, we know that improvement occurs over a three-year cycle, and given the improvement work that we are doing as a district, that we would also recommend that this type of deep dive, although the data is reported, that a thorough analysis relative to implementation be done on a three-year cycle rather than on every year where the data may be short. That way, over a three-year cycle, we actually have breadth of data that can be reviewed and results that can be reviewed, much like our academic return on investment process, so for your consideration. Next slide, please. As a reminder, our academic goals have to do with 5% growth overall for all of our students, K-12, and 8% for historically underserved, and the purpose for that, for our students especially, the purpose for that is that John Hattie's research is very clear, students should grow a certain amount, around 3% to 5% from year over year, but it takes another year and a half of similar growth for historically underserved students to address the gaps and the impacts that they may be experiencing. And so, for that reason, 5, when you take it, you know, 1.5%, you get to 7.5, and I always round up because more is always better. And so, that is where those goals have come, have, from which they've been generated. In kindergarten through eighth grade, the measures that we use as a reminder are I-ready math and I-ready literacy. At ninth through 12th grade, we are looking at ninth grade on track, credit attainment and graduation as the academic markers. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn this over to Paul and have him just briefly walk you through, much of this data you have seen before, you know, and you are already, it has already been reported to the board, those schools within our system who have already met the 5% and 8% or one of the other, and the progress that we are making in that direction. This evening, where we would really, where you will see is emphasize our relative to our data relative to math, our credit attainment, you know, in high school, and then our challenges relative to attendance. So, with that, I'll turn this over to Paul to quickly walk us through these data sets.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Just to briefly explain, this table here represents each of our individual schools, K through eight, so it's our elementary and middle schools, and then an overall average of our district as a whole. And so, what we are seeing in this report is that with English Language Arts, every single school that we have in our district has grown at least a little bit. We, not every school met the 5% goals for all categories, but for the most part, with English Language Arts, our, all of our schools did have more students this year on track than last year. It is important to note that with some of this data, that it is English Language Arts. This is the first year where we gave a Spanish Language Arts assessment, which is creating the baseline for our two-way immersion schools, and will be used to measure growth and evaluate their growth for next year. It is also important to note that due to some data irregularities at Hazelbrook, we had to adjust our calculations for meeting our 5% and 8% goals for that school. Currently, the eighth-grade students at Hazelbrook are not included in the calculations for that school in particular, and for the middle school average overall, and for the district average overall. It is something that we are continuing to look into, but that is how we adapted this year's report to meet those data irregularities. Moving on to the next slide, the story for our schools regarding math is less straightforward. We have some schools that are moving a little bit in the right direction, some that have fallen back, and that leads us to an overall district average of growth of only 1% from last year, and only 3% for our historically underserved. So, if we break that down into the individual schools, we're seeing a mixed set of results rather than the more positive set of results for English Language Arts. Moving on to the next slide, digging deeper into the I-ready results in particular and the Acadience results, we do have enough results, again, aside from our eighth grade, to be able to consider these results to be valid. We have enough of a participation rate that we can entrust these outcomes. Next slide. Although, again, I do have to say, we did not meet our 5% and 8% goals, we did see growth from this year to last, sorry, from last year to this year across all of our grade levels. This means that more students are in the safe zone at the end of each year and are ready for future success. Again, with eighth grade, we are looking into those irregularities. Moving on to the next slide, we are seeing the same growth in our Acadian scores, which is our assessment of reading fluency, where I-ready is overall reading comprehension. And so, seeing the same growth from I-ready and Acadience does corroborate the results that we are seeing more students on grade level for reading this year as compared to last year. Moving on to the next slide, moving on to math. The total students tested for I-ready again meet our threshold for participation rate. Overall, participation was around 92%. Moving on to the next slide, the results, again, are a little bit less straightforward, again, a set of mixed results where some grade levels we did see growth from last year, whereas others, we did see a slight decrease from last year, meaning the number of students who met grade level standards is slightly smaller in some areas and slightly more in some areas. All right, we do have, I do apologize if you go back one, we do have one notable exception with our second grade where we did see a very large increase in the number of students on grade level for math. So, that is one bright spot that I would like to point out. Moving on to attendance, we are in our second year for most of our grade levels, our third year for middle school, where we are seeing a dramatic increase in chronic absenteeism since before the pandemic. With two years now under our belts, one more year will mean that this becomes the new trend rather than an aberration from the trend. This will, as we take a look at next year, it will be safe to say that our average chronic absenteeism is approximately double what it used to be. Moving on to the next slide, we are seeing that that chronic absenteeism is not equal across the board for our different student populations. We are seeing some student populations having larger chronic absenteeism issues than other. I especially note the Pacific Islander population as well as the Latino population. Moving on to the next slide, going to talk a little bit about behavior and office discipline referrals. Office discipline referrals is one of those things where you have two sides that you're trying to measure, which is the behavior that causes the referral as well as the validity of the person writing up the referral, and those two together equal the referral itself. And overall, we are seeing a slight increase in the number of referrals for each quarter from last year to this year, but it is not out of line compared to our pre-pandemic numbers. That story is going to change in a little bit when I start talking about bullying and harassment in a couple slides. So, moving on to the next slide, again, I do have to say that the referrals are not distributed equally across all of our populations. We are seeing a disparity in our historically underserved races and ethnicities as compared to our white population. So, that slight increase from last year to this year is also something that occurred before quarter four. So, if we're taking a look at the quarter four results on the right, we do see that there's a slight decrease in the number of referrals that happened at the end of last year. So, it is an important note to say that that increase in behavior referrals occurred earlier on in the school year than previously. Moving on to the next slide, this is where we are going to be seeing a very large increase in the number of incidents and the number of incident reports around bullying and harassment. This is, it is important to note that this is a count of incidents, meaning there might be students, multiple students per incident, but this is a count of the number of incidents itself. And we are seeing a more than double of the count of incidents from last year, which is more than double the number of incidents from pre-pandemic. This is the highest number of incidents for bullying and harassment that we have recorded for TTSD. It is important to note also that, looking on this, the graph on the right, this is not something that occurred dramatically in one quarter over another. These incidents were reported rather evenly across the school year. Moving on to the next slide, I am very happy to report that when it comes to our overall middle school academic, we have fewer students failing one or more classes this year than we have previously. So, unlike our attendance, it is important that during the pandemic, the dramatic increase in the number of students failing in middle school was an aberration from the norm, and we are returning back to a pre-pandemic norm of students failing classes in the middle school. So, that is one very positive sign for our middle schools that, unlike the attendance, which is sticking around, the attendance issues, the failing of classes is returning back to what is the pre-pandemic trend. Moving on to the next slide, our ninth grade, our ninth grade is one of those numbers that helps us predict graduation nine years later, nine years later, four years later, in that if you earn six credits in your freshman year, you are more likely to graduate four years later than if you earn fewer than six credits. So, it's one of those indicators that helps us predict, absent intervention, of course, graduation later on. And so, it's important to note that for this ninth grade year, every year that these ninth graders have been in school for the past four years has been a change in the rules of what it means to be a student. This year is their first year as ninth graders. Last year was the first year that they came back after the pandemic. The year before that, they were gone for the most part, the entire year. The year before that, they were the first-time sixth graders. And so, it just, every year, we are changing the rules on these students, and when we do that, it is noted that through the research that it's harder for them to have that cognitive ability to focus on the content. And so, we do see a slight decrease in this year's number of ninth graders who are on track to graduate, but not a frightening dip based on the history that these students have faced for the past four years. Moving on to the next slide, as Dr. Ricky Smith was saying, that we do also see credit attainment as our way of evaluating ourselves in the 5% and 8% goal. We are unfortunately seeing a slight decrease in the number of students who are earning at least six credits by the end of the year, and that is true across all four of our grade levels. It is always, just to say that that 12th grade is not anything to be afraid of. We have a lot of kids that have already got close to enough to be able to graduate, and so it's not surprising that we have fewer 12th graders that needed to earn six credits, but the fact that it's going down is also something to be concerned a little bit about, and it is going down across all of our grade levels. And then, just to make sure that as we go into the very last slide, just a way to compare the demographics of our students to our licensed as well as our overall staff population, we are seeing that the, there is a slight decrease in the number of white students as compared to the rest of the populations in our school. We are also seeing a slight decrease in the number of white teachers in our schools, so it is not causing a larger disparity between the students and the teachers. They are shifting at a little bit about the same rate. And that gets to the end of my part.
And this brings us to the end of the data presentation. Will entertain any questions that you have for us.
I would like to know, what is the plan for the teachers and the staff and the administrators at those schools that didn't meet the 5% and 8% goal? What is the plan to share their success stories, their secrets of success with educators and administrators for schools that did not?
Thank you. So, it's multi-pronged, Director. The administrator's retreat was focused 110%, this is where ORSC comes in, and particularly when we're looking at our math data, that when students have the opportunity to dig in and to talk and to work collaboratively in content, regardless of content, we know that learning is deeper and that it tends to help them close those academic gaps. So, the focus was strongly relative, was strong on ORSC, and as you know, and that's our focus, that's number one. Number two, the work that we did with the Center for Educational Leadership last year, and now has been picked up by Director Robson, by Dr. McCall, by Amber Fields, Secondary Director, by Dr. Ron, Director Ron here to my right, is that we will now lead those classroom walkthroughs, and being very intentional about having, using the 5D rubric, which basically calls out, you know, what are the instructional moves that we should see happening? What is the talk that should be happening? How much is the teacher talking? How much is the student talking? What are they talking about? And so, there will be a very strong, there's a strong protocol relative to how you gather that data, and then at the end of those learning walks, and they happen several times throughout the year, then the team, all of the administrators come back together, and they do go through a protocol of what data did we collect, what does it tell us, and what is our next move? At an even deeper level than that, Dr. McCall and Director, Secondary Director Fields, in the, what we know at the elementary level, I'm going to use elementary as an example today, but that's true at middle and secondary in different forms, is what we call the 100% meetings. And so, when they get their I-ready data, they put every student up, and there is, again, a protocol that they go through, and not only are they looking at who is on grade level, who's approaching grade level, who is not yet approaching grade level, and you disaggregate the data that way, but then they're having meaningful conversations around what are the next steps? So, what has been applied or has not been applied for those individual students? And then, Dr. McCall insists that both the administrator and the team have a viable plan, that in the next months, when they come together, they can report back on what, how did that change the data? So, there's a very close monitoring cycle that is in place within the school, in addition to the broader walkthroughs where we're looking at it as a system. as well as the, the work that we are doing, then continuing the professional development that we are doing with administrators. I will share with you that when we put up the data, both relative to i-ready, to all the principals, I received a number of emails from those schools who had not yet hit the five and eight percent, assuring me that there would be a change in the way in which they are working with their instructional leadership team and the way in which they are kicking off the year. And today I had the good fortune of making it to every single school. I was dropping off a little care package and welcome back. And as part of that, had the opportunity to eavesdrop, and they are absolutely following through with that, which is, here's our data, here, you know, what's missing? And it's, it's a different conversation than we've had, I think, just in content than we've had relative to the SIPs. And I think that there was a tremendous amount of belief that we couldn't hit five and eight percent. And now that, that's, it's been, been cracked. And so they know that it is possible. And for those that they hit the five and eight percent last year, they realize they've got to go after the next five to eight percent. So I, what I'm sure, I'm hopeful I'm able to articulate is that there is a multi-system throughout the system response, very broad to very granular, that is all focused relative to student outcomes and addressing those needs that, that you're seeing here in the data. Thank you for the question.
I have a couple of questions. The first with the bullying and harassment, are those student-reported and teacher-reported incidents on that slide? So, because I feel like one side of my brain says, I think we've had this conversation, those are really big numbers. The other part is our ACC, like our policies are working because students, if this is partially student-reported, they are using that system to make sure that those things are being reported, and that can also look like a good thing, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yes. So with the rollout of our EISH plan, we started off with administrators building and developing a response plan, right? So the first year was having that situated. And then the next year was then, looking at our equity pillars, you start with leadership, staff, students, families, and so forth. And so as the, the administrators supported the accountability system, then they started sharing what that would look like, not only to staff but also to students. So we have many of our secondary schools also having lessons about, here's what will happen when a bias incidence occurs, and here's how you can report. And so we do have now an increased amount of reporting because not only is staff, but also students are reporting as well. The, so there's that part. Did you want to share anything?
It is important to note that the number of incidences is, does not take into account who reported it, how many students were referred to the office, or the number of students that were affected by it. So it also does take into account those incidents where there is no initiator. It could be a student that was walking down the hall and heard something, but didn't know who it was. And so those numbers are a count of incidents themselves, not the number of initiators. It is also important to note that the number of students who are being referred to the office, we are seeing an increase in the number of students being referred to the office, but also at the same time, an increase in the number of referrals individual students are also receiving. And so that is indicative of a more open referral process as well.
Okay, that makes sense. And I think also, you know, I, I think the other side of that coin too is, I don't, probably the number of actual incidents happening aren't dramatically increasing. It's the number of folks feeling comfortable reporting them that's increasing. I think that's just a good context to have when community members might see that number and think there's an increase in these things happening, where it's more likely an increase in people using the process and the systems to report those.
Correct. When we started talking to students that first year when we rolled out the EISH plan, many students were resistant to report because they had a feeling that nothing was getting done. And as, you know, as we build the culture and climate of, you know, interrupting and intervening, students also not only see that there are things that are being done, but also there's lessons that are being brought back to the tier one systems to say, hey, here's what's been happening within our community. Here's how we can connect about that, and here's what you can do about it. And so the other part that came from the increase, I think at the second, towards the second semester, was our Educational Equity Advisory Committee had requested us to change the reporting process on synergy because we didn't capture those incidences where there were no originators listed and/or no victims. Because when there is maybe vandalism, we don't have an explicit victim. And so now you have that broader scope of incidents as well.
Okay, that's helpful. And then my other, and I think that's just, I love our process and that it's been evolving and working, and students are seeing, and hopefully you all are sort of seeing some of the fruits of those processes too, that it really is educating kiddos on, on the system and the process and how to report, and, and all of those pieces, I think is really wonderful and not very common, I think, in, in a lot of schools.
Right. And then the PBIS system also with students taking the surveys to say, you know, do I feel safe within my classroom? Do I feel connected with my peers? We saw the trend of peer-to-peer relationship is something that I think all schools need to work on. And so I think that's part of that work as well. Some of the data that Paul had shared too is, we do have repeat originators or originators that have repeat behaviors. And so the way in which we're addressing that also is at a more tier two, tier three level as well. So that's where our department comes in and supports students and families related to that impact as well.
That's really helpful. And then my other question is, are there conversations happening around those imbalances of our groups, our demographics of students that are being referred and that are chronically absent? You know, kind of what is, how are we wrapping around those students? Or the sort of, the holes in those systems that are having that?
Yes. So as Dr. Sue had shared, our work around our continuous improvement plans and the work that we did last year around our integrated plan as well, we're trying to connect the dots around those pieces and the health of our systems. So when we have those roundtables with all of you, there's questions that come up around, how are our systems coaching community responsive? What's the culture and climate like within our systems? And then how are we supporting our students with differentiated instruction? And that, that's all within our SIPs. So because of the data trends that we've been seeing, and we know that under policy ACC, we want to take a look at the health of our system. So we've changed the model of our leadership sessions a little bit. So instead of having them come out of their buildings once a month, we are meeting quarterly. And then actually, our SIP team, our Student Services, Equity, Inclusion, and Teaching and Learning Departments will be pushing into the schools and asking questions about their systems. So when we take a look at the disproportionate outcomes of attendance as well as behavior, it's, it's an important part of that work to do a systems health check to say, okay, when are you pulling out that data and what are you doing about that? So when we talk about equitable decision-making, the four, the four components that we shared in our equity audit is, you use your quantitative data to help assess and screen the health of your system. And then you do a root cause analysis where you actually connect and talk. You get street data, right, with the students that are impacted or the demographic groups of students that are impacted, but looking at extreme users. And then from there, after you do analysis of that data, there, there needs to be an implementation plan. So of that, what are the three I's are you focusing on? What investments are you making? What interventions are you proposing and, and doing? And then, you know, what are the initiatives that you're going to start? So when we talk about some of the work around attendance, you know, a common conversation that we're having is we're seeing that trend. And so what is an initiative, maybe district-wide, that we're going to take to understand what's impacting our students to, or impeding them to attend regularly? So, and then from there, sharing that information with our staff, our students, and then also our community members to make sure that we, we know that we understand that these are some systems gaps that we need to address. So those are the ways that we've been, we were planning for this year.
I would also add to that relative to the conversation that we had when Secretary Becerra was here. I've had the opportunity now to connect with Portland State University relative to their social work program. And as an outcome of that, Kathy Wilson-Fay, our Mental Health Coordinator, is now in direct conversation and program building. And so it's a two-strand piece, much like we talked about before. One is to not, we currently have BSWs that come and spend some time with us within our system. And they tend to do some very surface type of work, more practicing their skills than actually engaging in clinical work. But the, following the conversation that we had, we will now have MSWs, these are master students, who are able, and many of them are either working towards or already have their licensure, and so will be able to do even deeper work. So as we are thinking, particularly when we're looking at the attendance issues relative to particularly middle and secondary, to have more of those boots on the ground, then at the same time, building out a grow your own, of our own students that will eventually circle back to us. But this two-pronged process, I was very pleased that in a very short period of time, less than maybe two weeks, we had great interest and great partnership. And so we, hopefully, as that flushes itself out, we will bring that back to the board and share that work with you. I also have a meeting with President Cudd from PSU talking about helping them to meet their needs relative to expansion of their faculty so that they can continue to expand this very important program. And then the two of us will go back to the secretary and ask him to follow through with, with his commitment relative to funding those types of programs. So very exciting work, I think, that we're doing. I would also offer that we've had in a couple of little elementaries last year that just simply changing who is in that front office and greeting parents. In fact, one school saw almost within a month's time, a turnaround of growth of almost 20% in their attendance rate. And so when we talk about systems, it is important, and that's something that, there's maybe some smaller moves that can be made that we just need to think differently about. Both Dr. McCall and myself, we're sitting with, with our respective executive administrator, admin today, and they are building our schedules so that each of us are attending 100% meetings at all of our schools, as well as the walkthroughs. And so our eyes are also on, on these systems and we're pushing in rather than having, having them pull out and have the conversations. So multiple eyes looking at this data and multiple conversations around how to address the data and, and make significant movement on the data this year.
That is incredibly helpful from all of you. Thank you so much. Any other, oh, nice chair?
I have a question on the literacy i-ready goal rates. It says it does not include TWE. Is that coming up later or when would we get some kind of information on how the TWE program is doing?
That is going to be happening next year. This year, we had our baseline for our Spanish language arts because for grades K through two, instruction is done predominantly, almost primarily in Spanish. And so an English assessment for those students is not going to be showing the results that you would get. So we are now using a Spanish language arts, and that will be the assessment used to determine growth. And we will be able to show that for this coming up year. This year being the first time that we use that assessment, setting the baseline.
Go ahead, Owen.
So regarding the attendance data, one of the things that we talked about, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's students don't come either because they can't, because they don't have transportation, or they have to stay home for some reason, or because students don't feel welcome at school. My question is, is do we see like a correlation with an increase of students saying that they don't have that good peer-to-peer relationship or peer-to-adult relationship? Is that number decreasing while, like, is there a correlation between a lack of relationships and a higher chronically absent rate?
I can, I can speak to the correlation between the reasons. There are four major reasons why a student is absent. One is that they have barriers, that there is a, a, either medical issues or poor transportation, housing instability, things that keep you from being able to get from your front door to your classroom store. But beyond that, there's also an aversion of issue where something goes on in the building that I don't want to put myself into. There's disengagement, which is the third one, which is, I don't understand the purpose of what I am learning and how it is going to affect my life. And then the last one is the misconceptions that we have around attendance, that if I miss a day here and there, it's not going to cause an issue, where the research shows that random attendance, I mean, sorry, random absences is as impactful on scores as a run of two, of two weeks of absences. When it comes to correlating those reasons to our students, that analysis has not been done, but we do have the data to be able to do that, and I would be happy to report back once we have done that analysis.
Great question, Owen. I think that's where, when we talked about, we have the quantitative data as in the, in the attendance, and then we have the perception data from our PBS. I know that high school had taken the PBS survey for the first time, and so now we have that insight as well. The next layer is to ask students and, and families around those, those four areas, but also just being open to understanding, you know, what is the, what is the barrier for regular attenders, right, for, for that?
And I also appreciate the question, Owen. I would also say, share, share with you all that this is a, this has been a focus number one for superintendents across the state and within our, our association. Every district is dealing with this, and we, we believe a lot of it has to do with the continued recovery out of the pandemic. And a recent report by a psychology professor at the, at Seattle University said that, based on her research, that she said that whenever a community goes through a disaster, it is almost a six-year cycle of recovery. And so as many students during, during the pandemic learned, you know, that whether I attend online or not, it was, it was a mixed bag. And so unfortunately, some of that behavior has also layered itself back into brick and mortar. And so that's why the data that, that we are gathering, that Dr. Ron has identified, is critical to understand where are we in those four factors, and, and then how do we address that? And then also knowing that we do have students who firmly believe, you know, what difference does it make? We have pandemics, we have global warming, we have, rather than how can I roll up my sleeves and how, how can I engage to help make the world a better place? And so I think first, we have to understand where the barrier is, and then the, then second, you know, how, how to address that. But also, and I would also share with you that, you know, coming through the pandemic and that the work has continued, is that again, those students that are, you know, what we would call the high flyers, are well-known and are tracked, and a whole team comes around in terms of supports. It's just, I think, to this one researcher's credit, you know, if it's a six-year process, well, where, where are we? You know, year two, three, out? And so, you know, it keeps us mindful of the fact that this work continues. Yeah. Nice chair?
Thank you. I wanted to talk about the last slide, but it's not in the presentation, so I don't know if you can put it up. Thor, it's, there we go.
Student demographics?
Yes. So it looks like within the Hispanic demographic there, we've got about 28% students, but then we also have only 9% licensed and like 16% all staff, right? So I'm just wondering, how are we increasing our pipeline? What are we doing to increase the pipeline to match the, the market representation of our students?
Thank you. I would share with you, there are a couple of things, and again, I think you certainly have Director Reed present the work that they continue to do. You know, we have our Grow Your Own, which is, you know, unfortunately, we can only fund six positions at a time. And so if there were additional funding in that as work, I had the privilege of serving, representing COSA on the Educator Advancement Council. And the purpose of that council is to provide those additional grants to expand Grow Your Own. They are currently undergoing an executive director change, and I'm hopeful that they will have someone seated soon so that we can continue that work. So that's number one, is to increase our funding pipeline so that we can increase the number of candidates that we can, we can put in, into the, into the mix here at TTSD. Number two, thanks to legislation, we were able, we are able now to hold on to those, you know, even in times where fiscally are, we may expand and contract. And so that stability, I think, has been key and will eventually show up over time. But the reality of it is, is that we are all competing for a very small pool. And so that's why the Grow Your Own is critical. And it's the same with mental health workers. That's why we wanted to build off of our current success with teachers to do the same relative to mental health. But that's what it is going to take into an attracting. And quite frankly, unfortunately, because of the challenges that public education has faced during the pandemic, no one is really enthusiastic about stepping into the arena as either a teacher. And certainly, we see the same thing in terms of school administrators and in terms of superintendents. Yet, I think that there is a great deal of good news, but we have to, as I exhort my fellow colleagues, we have to tell our stories, that, you know, these are our challenges, that these are our successes, and this is why public education matters. And it should be seen as an honorable profession worthy of respect. So I think all of those factors mix in. But we continue very hard work and very focused work relative to hiring. We've had a number of administrators, candidates of color, that have been snatched from us by other districts surrounding us. And it's just, it's just the competition that we're under. But we continue the work because it's the right work to do.
Yeah, and I was noticing the, you know, the effort they were putting into with even the videos that were posted online of our Grow Your Own, right? And also of our employees who have been with us for a long time, like Damian, that, you know, he's been here for a while, and the success that he's had. So I'm glad that we're working on that and that we're moving towards that direction of not only growing our own, but also ensuring that we are retaining the staff of color that we have.
And we would be, again, our plan is to have Director Reed bring a full report to you, probably about mid-year after we've sifted and sorted all of the staffing and know where we stand, so.
Any final? I think we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was wonderful. Next, we have the enrollment update. Are you?
Yes, thank you. Director Reed unfortunately fell ill this evening, and so myself and Director Moore will be providing you a brief overview of the current status of enrollment. So I will just give you a very brief overview, and then Director Moore will speak to you relative to how we calculate our ADMW and where we stand relative to our ADMR based on budget projections. Overall, you should have received in your board update the link that shows we continue to have a modest increase, particularly at the elementary, and particularly in early elementary. And to date, because I know that this was a concern of Director Ruston's relative to teachers going into the field, we have used ESER, we have used SIA, and then there was an additional, David, what was it, 1 million that we received in addition to our SIA that with the recalculation of the 10-2. And then taking a look at the overall taxes collected, we were fortunate enough to receive those additional funding, which came at a very critical juncture as we are looking at these hotspots. But I would share with you that to date, Twalton Elementary has received four additional FTE, one at second, one at fifth, one at first, and one at third. Templeton has received two additional FTE, one at Kinder and one to create a four-five split. Metzger has received one, Bridgeport, one, Byram, two. Fowler, .17 to help them resolve an issue relative to the TWE program. Twalton High School, one FTE, and Twalty Middle School, .5 FTE. So again, very strategic, we are looking, you know, typically, we allocate those when you either hit or exceed the top of the range. And then thinking very carefully, such as in Metzger, where you have both an English-only and a TWE component. Many times on the English-only, we had see an increased number of students with special disabilities, special ed, and so need additional support there. As well as, we've still got some bubbles that are working their way through when our enrollments were higher. And so they're working their way through the system. But I want to assure the board that those are being monitored closely and are being addressed as, you know, as they occur, while being thoughtful that we have limited resources to address those issues. With that, I will see if there are any questions about the numbers per se, and then turn them to, turn this to Director Moore.
Okay, thank you, Director Moore.
Thank you, Dr. Ricky Smith. Good evening, Chair Urban and members of the board. I'll take a couple minutes to remind everyone how enrollment converts to ADM or average daily membership and how that impacts our revenue from the state in the end. So hopefully, you got a chance to look at the updates at the end of last week because we're seeing some growth in enrollment numbers already. Hopefully, that trend continues, if not maintain at the current level. And there's two pieces of good news, that growth. And to remind everyone, average daily membership, regular as opposed to weighted. So ADMR versus ADMW. ADMR is the biggest component of ADMW, and it's also the biggest component of the state school fund formula. So that's why we keep tabs on that number on a regular basis, especially this time of year as we're nailing down, you know, what that actual fall enrollment number is going to be on October 1. So if you look at the estimate or the numbers from last Friday, we're showing total enrollment of 11,287. The number that was projected and provided by the demographers was 11,248. So we have growth of 39 kids there. And in addition, this has never happened to me before, but between the December 1, when we get the preliminary estimate from the demographer, and we need that number to do our data collection that's due to the ODE around January 1, that number was 11,224. So we gained 24 kids in that estimate between the time they gave me the preliminary estimate and by the time they published the report. I just discovered that when I was updating the ADM factor. So we really have growth of that 63, 64 number in our ADM. So if you, just for number geeks like me, if you multiply that by $10,000 per ADMR, that's approximately $600,000 that we don't, that's growth in our available resources in the current year. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions. The ADM factor that we have here is based on, starting with that estimated fall enrollment number and looking at the trend from recent years of what factor results when you do the math to divide the final ADMR divided by the enrollment in the fall. So it's, last year, that number we were using was 1.009. This year, it's 1.011, so a little bit of a growth there, too.
Questions? I feel like that's good news. There's good news in there. Any questions? All right. We're good. Thank you so much. All right, and with that, we'll move to our first action item, which is now B, which is the 2023-28 Mitch Charter School Contract. Director Irvin? And Caitlin?
Okay. Board Chair Urban, members of the board, student reps, great to see everybody this evening. We want to just introduce a process that we've been going through and the privilege of actually working with Caitlin Blood, Executive Director at Mitch, and Nicole Hans, Assistant Director. And we started working with Caitlin and team at the latter part of the school year last year as the Mitch contract was expiring as of June 30. And so we came together in an absolutely collaborative process that yielded what we think is a contract that is worthy of moving forward with. So with that, I think at this point, having shared the contract through the board packet, having had an opportunity to look at that, I think I would open it up for questions at this time to see if we can field any questions that might be out there.
Any questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Tyre Twalton School District's contract with Mitch Charter School as presented.
I second. All right, the motion was made by Vice Chair Heimis and seconded by Director Zerschmid. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Chair Urban, I just wanted to mention that I will need to abstain from the vote tonight. So just a little explanation on that. There is no actual conflict of interest as defined, because I have no financial interest in the contract. But I do work with Mitch in a professional setting through my work with Oregon School Boards Association. And so it was recommended to me that going forward, I not take a position, an official position, on anything to do with the Mitch contract going forward, so I will abstain from the vote.
Perfect, and thank you for the explanation on that, Director Miles. So hearing no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye? Any abstains?
Aye.
Perfect. And the motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, and the next up is Director N with the contract award for Student Voices and Youth Advisory Services.
Good evening. Thank you again for having me share our request for Student Voice and REEP. So the background for this request is because last year, we had taken a pause on REEP programming so that we could calibrate some services and supports. We now are bringing back REEP to Twalty. And because the amount is over $100,000, we wanted to bring that forward and get approval from the board. Do you have any questions related to the contract?
I do. I'm excited that it's back, for sure.
Yeah, I do want to highlight the impact that REEP has had. As you know, we've had our integrated plan, our strategic plan, and it has been because of our partners that we've gotten the voices of our racially, culturally, and linguistically diverse community members. And so we want to make sure that we grow that and move forward.
That's amazing. Thank you for that.
This is a terrific program, and I'm really excited to make a motion to approve a contract in 2023-24 with REEP for a fee of $150,000.
Second.
Motion is made by Director Zerschmid and seconded by Vice Chair Heimis. Is there any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And you're sticking with us.
Okay.
Great.
And for the next action item is for the approval for our contract with ERCO. As there are some changes to this year's work in that as we are headed towards our third year of a more robust program with ERCO, we are, we've gotten some feedback from our secondary administrators, but also our partners. And they had been expanding after the pandemic in the middle school to support our students. But the stress of having the, our partners have split shifts. So there's full-time staff that work half-time at the middle school and then another half-time at the high school. I think that puts a lot of stress on our community partners. And so as we head into a full analysis of the program and a program inventory and a return on investment, we really want to make sure that we set the conditions for success. So we are moving to have our partners at the high schools full-time. But also, we have learned a lot over the last few years in some various change ideas. So last year, we had supported a tier-one approach for the whole district. So not only did ERCO support our students at the middle school and the high school, but they also facilitated family groups, like our Family Affinity Connection Series, for all of our families across our district. And so they're going to continue to do that work at a tier-one level. And we've been having open gym sessions where we invite all of our PI community to those events. And then we're also networking and connecting our families also with resources, but also one another to support engagement and empowerment. And then another thing that we had noticed was as we were doing the pilot study around attendance and those that were first from justice, our PI community, it's been noted, not only in our district, but also Washington County, that our PI community have been disproportionately impacted by unstable housing. And so with that, we've found that as we put a strong focus on supporting the family unit, as our partners are working with our high school students who also have siblings across our district, they're also serving the family as well. So we're going to use that as a model for study to see how we can support and stabilize families and support the access to resources and, but also stabilizing the needs of the family unit. And so that is our focus for this year's work. I hope that you approve.
That's fantastic, and I'm excited to see sort of, as you kind of think about these pilots and these models, sort of at some point, it can be, even if it's just an update, to kind of see what we've learned about kind of focusing on those, like, the family unit and that piece, sort of what that, what other stories that tells will be really cool to see.
Yeah, well, one thing that I do want to highlight is we are in our sixth-year partnership with ERCO, but it started off with a very small program. And as we take a look at student voice data and our perception data, we already have seen gains in that. Historically, our PI community actually had highlighted that they felt most disconnected at school. But in our recent, most recent PBIS survey, it was our PI students that said they actually, you know, there's a question, do you have somebody at school that you can connect with? And they were in the positive. So that's like tangible data there that, you know, the investments that we're making are making, you know, an impact.
I love this program. I love ERCO. It's such a great program. And I know that we have other... And I know that we have other refugees that could benefit from this, not just our Pacific Islanders. So hopefully, we can continue this program with that organization. What I'm wondering is, and I don't see it on here, but maybe I'm missing it. How do we measure our return on investment?
How do we measure our return on investment? Well, with the focus study this year, you know, we had, in the proposal, you do see some shifts and changes within the contract. We're getting a little bit more aligned with our community partners around what are the clear measurable outcomes that we want to see. So having the fact that the gaps that we have within attendance is something that we want to take a look at, is as we intentionally partner and have our ERCO team a part of the tier, the multi-tier systems of support. I think that's where we can start seeing the partnership with our community partners related to attendance specifically for our PI community. And so as we take a look at engagement, you know, being able to not only be at school, but also attending classes, connected to, you know, the work that our advocates are able to do to coach, support, and make those bridges. Some of the things that we have learned is when students do miss a few days of school, it feels like it's a snowball effect. So by the time that they step inside the classroom and they are caught in the middle of a lesson or they're caught, you know, so those are the ways in which how us partnering with teaching and learning and students around how do we support some of the structures of a lesson? When you start with a warm welcome, when you connect with engaging practices, then that gives, you know, a touch point for students to be able to connect. So how do we partner with our community partners to, you know, ERCO uses the term credible messenger. So to be able to be a credible messenger to our students to say, here's what we've been doing in the background. So if you try to step in, you can see, here's the things that you can see that the staff or the teachers are doing to make sure that, you know, you're not going to get lost. But these are, you know, how you can advocate, like coded language around, if you are getting confused, then here's what you can do. So that coordinated effort to connect.
No, that sounds great. And then walk me through, so we're getting two full-time youth family advocates. How will we select the fifteen families that they will be working with?
So that, so one of the things that we're doing as an adjustment to partnership is through the MTSS process. So when we were talking with our community partners, some of the things that we didn't want to have happen that was a pattern or a trend that was occurring was that when we have community partnerships, it's not, I'm going to defer to you to then be the person to connect with our students, but it should be an added layer of support versus deferment. And so what we were finding was, you know, our community partners were getting, having great relationship with their students, but then the bridging of like also internal staff was not, was not there. And so having them a part of those MTSS systems and having them be connected to what were the interventions and supports that were offered, I think that that's going to be a part of that conversation as well.
I just want to say that, you know, like I said, I'm really excited about this because it fits well with our strategic plan, right? And centering equity into everything that we're doing, plus creating those equitable outcomes for our most marginalized communities. So some of our constituents might say, why are we investing so much money into this organization? But it's because we want to ensure that our Pacific Islanders, who are a community who is being or who we can see from the data, even that just shown recently, that they are very highly impacted in our schools and that they need support. And so we're centering them in the conversation. And while we're, and when we're doing that, we are following what we've outlined in our strategic plans. So it's just going full circle to why this is so important.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, I agree, this is a hugely important program. And I was really excited when we started talking about putting it down into the middle school level and reaching those kids. And so I'm a little torn at the idea that we're going to be moving it back to just the high school students with some sort of reach down into the families. So my question is that perhaps in the future, as we're looking at next year's budget, and this is a Measure Ninety-eight funded thing, can we maybe be looking at ways to expand our ERCO program with maybe another person who then isn't split between middle school and high school, but can really focus on our middle schools? So the kids at that age can also be getting some care if they don't have an older sibling.
Yes, I think what I really like about our district is that we make data-driven decisions, right? About our budget. And I think we know some of those strong points and some of those. We know that the partnership is effective in ensuring that our PI students feel a sense of belonging. We know that to be true, right? Now, as we do a focus study this year in high school, we are, continue to reinforce that at a macro level, so a tier-one across our district. And that's why we're still doing the things that we're doing related to families and also some of the connection points for affinity groups across our district. What I really want to do this year is to have a calibrated conversation with our partners related to some of the systems gaps that we're seeing. And so if we can get some insight related to that, then when we talk, when we do come in front of our, come before our constituents, we can share the impact of a very intentional and support plan for our community so that we can advocate for more funding as necessary. I think the history of our community is that once they know what can happen, I think they're more open to reinforcing and supporting those investments. So trying to be good stewards of our funding. Okay.
With that, I move to adopt Resolution Twenty-three, Twenty-four dash zero three, as submitted to grant a special exception that authorizes the superintendent to negotiate and execute an agreement with the Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization for delivery of culturally specific services to students and families from the Pacific Islands in the amount of two hundred forty thousand.
Second. Motion is made by Vice Chair Heimais and seconded by Director Miles. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I see you're coming on up.
Good evening. I get the pleasure of announcing officially that we were awarded our second PGE electric bus grant. Just one thing that I wanted to clarify, I know Dr. Sue shared a little bit in her board report last board meeting, that was up to three buses. But based on our budget and the amount that was given, we can afford two. And so that reflects in this document that you saw in the board report. And so it's four hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars for two buses and then twenty-five thousand dollars for infrastructure. These, the difference between the last grant and this one also is that these are for two larger buses rather than the smaller ones. So just asking that the board accepts the grant from PGE.
So the additional infrastructure, is that just going to be more charging stations for the buses at the bus yard or at a different bus yard?
Same. So the reason why, so the original grant, the one we got in twenty-one, was for fifty thousand for infrastructure. This one's for twenty-five because we're a second-time recipient, knowing that we don't need the full fifty. And so this will pretty much just go to purchasing the charger, charging stations themselves, not the power and everything that goes, because it's already going to be there.
Makes sense.
I have a question. So with the, you know, with the infrastructure that we're investing in and with getting these grants for the buses, do we foresee a lot of like repair? Since these are going to be our buses, right? Like, do we foresee costs for repairs or, you know, usual wear and tear or kind of?
We actually anticipate less cost for wear and tear because you're not, no oil changes, no gas, no, I mean, all that stuff is so pretty much, it's tires and batteries and hopefully, nothing mechanical goes wrong. But we would anticipate that the cost to keep these buses running is less than a regular diesel bus.
Okay.
I appreciate the question, Director. In addition, I had the opportunity through AASA to sit on a work group nationally and in conversation with other states that are further ahead of us in terms of use of electric buses. They've, they would reinforce what you just heard here is that the maintenance is less. The challenge at the time has been supply chain in terms of, you know, batteries more than anything else, but that their overall maintenance and wear and tear, they've been very pleased with the outcomes. And so I think long-term, not only are we doing better things for the environment, we're also saving dollars in terms of repairs.
That'll make our climate committee happy.
Yes.
With that, I move that the Tiger-Twolton School Board accept the grant from Portland General Electric for two Type C school buses for the amount of five hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-four, as presented.
Second. Motion is made by Vice Chair Heimais and seconded by Director Zerschmid. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I have just one question that I was going to ask, but I don't want to sound too greedy, but we've gotten two. What are the chances that we could ever go for a third?
Well, Mr. Moore might have a, so this is how it works. From a district budget standpoint, we budget to purchase about five buses every five years. So it's one bus per year. We're kind of getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. So we kind of probably need to pause unless there's a collective decision to move forward in a different way to purchase more electric buses. But right now, we're probably tapped out for a couple of years from a budgetary standpoint.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And you will stay with us.
Yeah. So with electric buses comes charging stations. And as you know, we have installed really a total of eight ports already currently at Art Rutkin Elementary. And those are considered public ports. And so generally, what happens is, is we don't want to just have anybody come into Art Rutkin, plug in for free, because then we are incorporating all those costs that come with the maintenance on the charger and the electricity that's being used. So there's usually charges. So just like if you, if anybody owns an electric car and you're driving around and you need to charge up, you're going to get charged there, just like if you're purchasing gas. And so what's presented is a rating system based on time of day to use our charging stations at Art Rutkin. Need add anything? Nope.
Wait, you're saying that electricity is not free?
Yeah. The one thing I would add is you probably would say, where'd you come up with these numbers? Well, they were, come from two different places. One is surrounding districts that do have charging stations in districts. We looked at what they're charging. Also, we had conversations with Blink. Blink is the charging station manufacturer. They pulled up a map and showed us different places around Tigard that are charging. And this is about where everybody is. The one thing that makes ours probably a little bit more enticing is that our chargers will charge faster than most.
Time to get an electric car.
It would be really cool if we could be like, and come and volunteer in the school while your car is charging. You know, a little encouragement, I don't know.
I was going to say, the location, we were on a call this morning and looking around us. And so around Art Rutkin, we're about the only game in town for a couple of miles around. And then the nearest charging stations to us, it would take three times as long to charge there as at the Rutkin station. So the price that we're charging is a mid-range price for the, for the high-speed charging stations or some that are a lot more expensive. And, but there's really not any in the area. So we want to monitor this and see. We also went through our PGE bills. And then those are kind of a little bit more challenging to come up with a kilowatt hour because there's a different times of the day, a different rates. The high schools charge a different rate than an elementary because of the usage that they, the amount of usage that they have. So factoring in all those with fees and everything, we are kind of at a sweet point trying to not charge too much, but have enough in there so that if someone drives off and it's plugged into their car, we hopefully will have some funds available to replace that charging cord. And so we feel like this is a good start. And our rep said you could definitely charge more. But we want to see how this goes and see what the usage is and really provide a service in that region.
Have we thought about taking this district wide? Sorry. No. Make some more revenue.
Art Rutkin is, has solar panels. Is this electricity going to come from those solar panels?
It, it all kind of works together, but it feeds into the overall system, yes.
So it could be, we could also entice people with the idea that by charging at our school, you are solar charging your car.
Yes.
I like it. We have some advertising to do. All right, I move that the Tiger-Twolton School Board adopt the electric vehicle charging station rates as presented.
Second.
Motion is made by Director Zerschmid and seconded by Vice Chair Heimais. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. That's exciting. So as we explained last time, we have reserved about fifteen minutes at the end of meetings for board reflection time. Anything that we want to, as a board, kind of discuss or talk about moving into the next couple of weeks? Does anyone feel a need for that time this evening? I'm seeing no's. All right, so with that,